Good evening. This is a -- Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the Ad Hoc Committee on Short-Term Rentals, September 12th, 2023. Would you all rise so we can say the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the Constitution of the public's stance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay. I see that we have our -- That was our first item on the agenda. Our second item is public delegations. And I see we have quite a few folks in the crowd this evening. I think I just would like to remind everyone that the public hearing for the Short-Term Rental Committee, our first of our two that we were required to have, is on the 25th of September. It's a Monday coming up. But however, there are delegations here this evening. And if you'd like to speak, please do so. I would say, keep your remarks to just a couple of minutes. Again, there will be more opportunities to speak at the public hearing. And since there is such a large crowd, I'm assuming many of you want to speak. So do I have a starter? Someone who would like to come up to the podium first? Yes, go ahead and state your name and your address for the record, please. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Kiri Clark-Hallaway, and I own a home at 20 Adewan Avenue. First, I want to say I'm coming into this tonight completely ignorant of anything that's been gone on previously. So forgive me if I talk about stuff that you guys already know and are bored with. But I wanted to share my perspective as a short-term renter. So here's my little story. In 2020, my husband, Rob Hallaway, and I bought our dream house on Adewan Avenue. We weren't looking to buy a house, but I had just retired and the pandemic got us thinking about where we want to spend our future. I spent much of my childhood in Old Lime, where my grandmother lived, so we chose this area. An innocent drive around neighborhoods led us to a for-sale sign, and we fell in love with the home. My husband, an airline pilot, will retire in seven years and will move here full-time. Until then, the only way we could afford to secure the house was by offsetting the expense through short-term rentals. We don't make a profit, but it helps keep our retirement dream alive. We were concerned from the get-go about the perils of short-term rental, about actually owning the rental. We wanted to ensure our home didn't get damaged and our neighbors wouldn't be bothered. In our neighborhood in New Fairfield, Connecticut, short-term rentals have been made illegal for less than a 14-day rental period. This was largely due to two incidents. Both incidents were unwanted, yet fairly minor, and I've questioned the severe regulations that have been imposed due to a limited number of incidents that have become legendary stories. As a regular resident there who does not rent our home in New Fairfield, we were always concerned with safety and security, but felt most homeowners were doing just fine. Our Lake area, like East Lime, has always attracted summer folks looking for country living, and now they have incredibly limited options, which makes a lot of people very sad. So here in Niantic, we've done several things to help mitigate the issues for our own property. First, in our advertisements on Airbnb and VRBO, we've clear statements that this is not the Jersey Shore or Jones Beach, and no beer coolers are allowed on the beach. We highlight the quiet residential family neighborhood aspect of the area and say that we allow small, quiet gatherings, but loud parties are not committed. We make this really clear upfront to our guests and after our first conversation with them as well. Additionally, the very smart Adewan Beach Association, to which we belong, has required that all home rentals have their renters read and sign a sort of code of conduct that states all the local rules. And I have a copy of that here tonight if you wish to see it. We have our renters sign and text a photo of this to us for each stay. I believe our warnings have worked. I regularly ask my neighbors if they've ever been bothered, and no one has ever said yes. They say our renters are kind, respectful, and while lights aren't always out by 8:00 p.m. or never what a reasonable person would consider more disruptive than any of our full-time neighborhood residents. The fact is, we live near beaches in a wonderful beach-vacation town, and short-term rentals provide a vastly different experience than staying in a hotel. We love that our home is being filled with great vibes by people making memories and celebrating their life moments at our home. We rarely have a group of drinking buddies at our place. We have siblings who reunite. Former Niantic residents come home for a week and show their old stomping grounds to their children and grandchildren. We've had families mourn losses, parents visit college students, and over a dozen small 60th birthday celebrations, which has become a weird thing at our house. We've even had a young German couple get married there with about 15 friends in attendance. The couple baked their own wedding cake in our kitchen. You can't do that in a hotel, and that's why people love short-term rentals. I've heard some people talk about this debate whether there's revenue that comes to the town due to short-term rentals, and I find it a funny debate. I have lots of numbers that can show you how much we believe our renters bring to the town, and it's pretty startling, just in restaurants and shopping, et cetera. I won't go into detail tonight. So my points here today are, first, to recognize that I understand that some people want to do completely away with short-term rentals. And in my opinion, that would be an overreaction. Second, I propose we put more structure around the short-term rental rules and process in order to mitigate the number of potentially unruly visitors. We could make town short-term renter code of conduct. We could put a minimum night stay to help weed out some of the potential trouble renters, which tend to be one or two nights, from what I know. We could create a formal complaint mechanism whereby reasonable complaints are filed and homeowners will have a three-strikes-and-you're-out system. We could, at the very least, mandate that homeowners put specific verbiage in their advertisements that makes it clear that disruptive behavior will not be tolerated in the town. May I add, we also need to ensure that complaints are reasonable, and not every small, fun summertime gathering where people are laughing on their decks does not constitute unreasonable behavior. I'd be happy to be a part of any of this going forward in idea generation or participation in any way to provide any numbers or information I have as a homeowner. God forbid we have to sell our home because this gets done away with, and some yahoos who'll be partying every night of the year will be living at our house, who buy it. That would be terrible for us and our neighbors. We'll do whatever we need to to ensure we can hang on to our dream house until we can become permanent East Lime citizens and, at the same time, keep our neighborhoods enjoyable to all of us. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else from the public? Yes. Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Okay. It's fine. Go ahead.
My name is Kimberly Barrett-McCord. We have a family cottage at 22 Atlantic Street at Crescent Beach. My comments are going to be very short because I prepared nothing. Again, as with you, I come into this blind. I just learned about this meeting a couple days ago, drove down from my permanent home in Granby, Connecticut, so that I could speak, and I will be back on Monday. I do want to just speak on behalf of my family. My great -- Two sets of great-grandparents bought houses at Crescent Beach back in 1920. Our family has been here for generations. These are second homes, as are many of the homes here in the beach community and in every beach community. A lot of the homes that are here are second homes. I read a book about 10-plus years ago called Saving the Family Cottage. More and more, as economies become different, as taxes go up, as families can no longer afford, as generations go down, to afford a second home, and they have to split it among siblings, among cousins, among many family members. It becomes very complex owning a family cottage in a vacation home. About in 2020, my husband and I actually bought out some cousins in our house so that we could be official owners of our beloved beach home. We had to begin renting, short-term, on VRBO just a few weeks a year just to be able to offset our expenses and allow us to maintain a home. I think you can all imagine what happens to homes that are second homes owned by family members that become rundown and dilapidated when family members can no longer maintain them because the costs of insurance and taxes become the only thing that they can cover. So I think short-term rentals can make for a really good option for saving some of these family cottages, keeping them in families that have been here for over 100 years, like my family. And I'll say a little bit more on that at the next meeting on the 25th and have a few more details. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Gail, there's a seat up front.
My name is Robert Van Corr, 107 South Beechwood Road in Giant's Neck Heights. I see from the minutes from last week that you're looking at a definition of short-term rental. That's got to be done first, I think, before you go on doing anything else. But I believe we have to look at sufficient off-road parking. Somebody coming in with several cars. I think we have to look at maybe ending on-street parking in residential areas. Whoever owns a short-term rental should be required to register with the town. And if it is within one of the numerous beach associations, some of which are special statistics districts or municipalities of their own right, should be -- The short-term rental should also be required to be registered with that organization. Every year before renting a house, the owner should be required to have a complete safety inspection performed by the fire marshal's office for working smoke detector and carbon monoxide detectors, adequate fire extinguishers, and a posted escape plan. The plumbing of the house should also be inspected to ensure compliance with pollution regulations. The town has a very good noise control ordinance, 90.01 through 90.99. I think we should have that as a requirement to be posted in a short-term rental. And we should -- I think we have to make a differential between Old Lime, where most of the beach association roads are private and controlled by their own particular regulations, to the fact that the roads within the beach areas of East Lime are public highways under the jurisdiction of the police. And we should make sure that this is clear to avoid minors and inappropriate people from the operation of golf carts and small motor vehicles. I think when it comes to the limitations such as the number of occupants based upon a rental, I think we should look at the number of bedrooms that are within a particular residence. If it's a one-bedroom house, that's two adults, not six, with a laying on the floor and laying on the porch. Two bedrooms, four adults. Three bedrooms, six adults. That's way to make a reasonable control so we don't have a house in a neighborhood flooded with 10, 12, 14 guests in a house designed to adequately care for two or three people. We don't want that type of situation to continue. We don't want Hartford Road and Old Lime. We don't want the very interesting altercations which occur there on a regular basis, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, okay. Right here. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm short in the back.
No, that's okay. I saw you.
My name is Lynn Cawkins-Bester. Probably most of you know all my brothers in town. Anyway, we are renting my mother's -- We live at 19 and 21 Saunders Drive in Saunders Point. Anyway, we have a little -- We've rented the house for probably 30 years, mostly on a yearly basis. And believe it or not, we've had more trouble with yearly renters than we've ever had with short-term renters. We have the -- The verbiage in our rental advertisement with VRBO says that we live on the property and that it's a nice, quiet residential, yada, yada, yada. And it's been fantastic. We've had people here from Munich, Germany. We've had a young family from London. It's a two-bedroom house. So it's usually, you know, mothers and fathers or mother, father, grandmother, and maybe a kid in something. But just the loveliest people you could ever imagine. And a lot of these people are looking to buy in the area. So they're very interested. They spend a lot of time. I think your point taken about short-term rentals maybe being under a week may be possibly prohibiting that. The irony, I feel, is these people aren't coming here to do a lot of damage or to be a problem to a town. They're here to weddings, funerals, graduations, visit kids, this kind of thing. Saunders Point has put in, you know, on the Aspogati Hills Club. You know, they're worrying about that. The reality is, people are there if they're there for under three days. They come in one day. They come down and have dinner. They don't check in until like 3:00 to 4:00 o'clock. They have dinner. They go buy some groceries. They drive around the town. They go to bed. The next day, they probably have an agenda set out. The day after that, they might do something or walk around the neighborhood or, you know, whatever. And then the next morning, they're gone by 10:00 in the morning. So they're almost the lesser of your problems. As far as regulations go, I'd hate to see you ban them altogether. I think they're a great asset to our community and especially a community that's looking to enliven their downtown, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But I do -- I can see, you know, if you want to go as far as having some sort of a beginning-of-the-year check or every-two-or-three-year check. I think town neighbors or people renting should register with the town. I think it should be a case of you have all our numbers. So if there is a problem, we can drive down and say, "You're out. Pack your bags, you know, gone." And we could do something, you know, some sort of a police presence like that. I mean, I don't know. I'm open to anything like that, but I'd hate to see you just get rid of it. Thank you. Thank you.
Let's come on up. Yes, in the back.
My name is Carol Hurst. I've been off and on a resident, and we've owned property here since 1944 in Giant's Neck. My father was a resident state trooper here. I can tell you, my experience with my father, what happens when you have many short-term, meaning nightly, not weeks. I understand a week, that's fine. But when it comes to that, you end up with something like Soundview and what Soundview used to be like, where you would get several families, the noise. The police were there all the time, constant police presence. There are -- This is not an exaggeration. It's the truth, but it's -- There were murders. There were all kinds of drug problems. And also, in Giant's Neck Heights, there used to be problems with short-term rentals with the teenagers. And you would get teenagers in there, and you would have houses destroyed. The apartments would be destroyed. This can happen again if you're going to do this. Now, I understand New York City has just gone through this, and they're changing things. Whereas, people who rent must be on-site. The landlords must be on-site. In other words, you can't have multiple properties. You're renting them all short-term, and you're not there to supervise. As far as the noise is concerned, I live in Giant's Neck. I have had a neighbor very loud until 10, 11:00 at night. The police do nothing. They do not do anything. So don't count on the police. I'm not criticizing the police. I'm the daughter of a policeman. But they don't have time to be worrying about noise. So they don't come out to stop the loud noise and the parties and the swearing and the yelling and the hollering that goes on. As far as weekly, I think that's a different situation. You're more apt to get families, people coming. They're more established. But you get a lot of people there for party nights when you have single nights. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Come on up.
Hi, Carol. My name is Margaret Puzo. I live at 15 Bayview Road.
I'm sorry. Could you repeat that, please?
Margaret Puzo, 15 Bayview Road. My husband and I bought our house 10 years ago in Giant's Neck Heights, and we love it. I spent three years looking for a home along the shore, starting in Old Saybrook and marching my way east. And I kept -- I was ready to give up after three years because I couldn't find the beach that I wanted and the community I wanted. Going through the Old Lime shores, like people brought out, you know, like there's party yahoo. This is our big, you know, people coming in. And we got to Giant's Neck, and it was like going home. I used to bring my kids here to Rocky Neck. And anyway, so we have just loved, loved our home. And we love the community. We love East Lime. And I know that there's been an increase in, you know, short-term rentals. And I think that a lot of good points were made that needs to be more controlled. We do have one on our street, and one night there was a problem. The next day, the land -- The owner, who lives across the street, like marched herself over and put an end to like the nonsense. And I think that that's, you know, I don't think we can -- See, you can't have short-term rentals, but I think that setting up protocols, you know, like the same -- Our streets are really tight in East Lime, in Giant's Neck Heights. And so if people park on the road, it just makes it really dangerous. So I think that if, you know, with the numbers of bedrooms should be taken into consideration, the parking situation, and perhaps more than, you know, putting a minimum number of nights. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Sure. Donna Barrett. We're at 54 South Washington Avenue. And this town, if you go to the Historical Society when they have their -- In Crescent Beach, they have photos and history for the last 100 years. And it's got a very long tradition of people coming in as renters, whether it was just as in a hotel room or in a house. It's not all that different. And I just -- Town's got a long, long history of being a place where people come to visit and rent and stay for a short time. I don't think it's been that much of a negative over the decades.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Come on up.
Good evening. Daniel Anselmo, Giant's Neck Heights, Vice President, 79 Spring Glen Road. I'm here to just to represent the board and just say that we are absolutely not looking to eliminate anything at all. Just as a board, we're looking to find some guidelines and/or even ordinances that some of the renters can follow. And if there's any -- Anything that we could represent and do on our own, we're looking for some advice as well. So for example, and without specifics, we have some that are absolutely phenomenal renters, and they -- He's actually here tonight. They take care of everything that they need to take care of. But we also have renters that have, and I just counted, 14 cars on the front lawn. And they rented a, literally, a party bus to bring everybody to the beach. And it's just -- It was just -- I personally think it was just out of line. But we don't have any teeth to say, "You can't do that." Do we want that? I don't know. We may have to figure out some kind of -- And we're just hoping that the renters can just follow through with whoever they're renting to and make sure that they follow the rules. Because it's -- There are a few rules that we like to keep our organization going. And as far as the young lady earlier, as far as renting to teenagers, I don't think that has ever happened. There may be renters with teenagers, but I can assure you, there are the 12 to 14 renters. I have yet to see anybody renting to teenagers. So I just wanted to make sure that was either cleared up or at least advocated. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Scoop, can I just say?
Yeah.
In fact, there used to be fraternities and sororities, high school fraternities and sororities that would rent for a long weekend in Giant's Neck. I live there, sir. I've been there a lot longer than you have.
Okay. Well, we -- We can get into that more, perhaps at the next public -- At the public hearing, rather. Yes, sir.
How are you? Brian Cooney, 37 Adewan Ave. We've been renting for three years, and it's been wonderful. And we do weekly rentals most of the summer, July, August. And we do three-to-four-day rentals, September, October, for just the long weekends. And we've never had a bad guest. And Airbnb and VRBO, they protect you. We don't rent to anyone that's not a five or 4.5. And they have great reviews. We don't rent to kids. It's been awesome. So that's it.
Thank you. Okay. The gentleman, please.
Philip Bucci, 65 Baby Road, Giant's Neck Heights. I've been down in the beach community now for 54 summers. I own a place. I also do Airbnb, VRBO. Just want to reiterate what Deb said. Zero problems, no issues. I think a lot of the issues that people are bringing up as far as like the parking and everything else have been issues that have been brought up at Giant's Neck Heights a long time ago before people were even doing the Airbnbs. As far as the insurance, I know I have to go through Voyt's London. Personally, not many insurance companies will insure Airbnb or VRBO to completely protect you. My insurance is much higher on my Airbnb than my regular house, which is much larger, much more bedroomed, assessed at a higher rate. All those things that people are talking about as far as safety precautions, I have to validate that to my insurance company. So I have to make sure I had to take pictures of all my internal plumbing, my external plumbing, my hardwired fire extinguishers and fire things there as well. So I think it's just a great opportunity. As the last man just said, you are able to vet your clients. We have had zero issues over the two years. We've had people stay a couple of nights. We've had people stay weeks and even longer. I think everyone treats the property kind of the way you treat it. If you go and you formally have all the rules written out to these people If you go and you formally, I have all the rules written out to these people that when they come in, they end up leaving the place nicer than when I left, when they, when they moved in, so just want to say that. Thank you.
What's your name again, sir?
Philip Bucci.
Thank you. Yes, woman in the back there in blue? Come on up.
Good evening, my name is Gail Shea, I'm at twenty-eighth South Lee Road, Giant's Neck Beach. I just want to talk about what I think in my mind is the bigger picture here that concerns so many people in so many towns, and that's that residential neighborhoods are being commercialized. And I've seen it, and I live in another town, too. And real estate agents are buying up houses and renting them. And single-family neighborhoods are being turned into commercial neighborhoods. And I think that's the big picture that's going on of what's happened, happening to our communities when it's the real estate people that are taking charge of the neighborhood. So that's my only thought tonight, thank you.
Thanks. Any last comments by anyone? Okay. All right, I will end public, yes, go, go right ahead, go ahead, sir. Again, remember, there's, there's a public hearing coming up.
Thank you for your patience. I just, my name is John Limondako, so I host at forty-four Indianwood Road. And I just want to touch upon what the gentleman said earlier about getting to the point and finding a solution. And I have a welcome book for my guests, and in it, I am very specific about the rules. And everybody has the opportunity to include their house rules on their listings. And so some of the other items that I thought about that I think would be a great idea is obviously quiet hours. So agree on a set of quiet hours that align with local noise ordinances. This respects both guests who might be unfamiliar with the community norms and neighbors who need their sleep. Parking regulations is, is another one. Designate specific areas for Airbnb or VRBO or short-term rentals in general for guests to park, ensuring the neighbors always have space. Even trash management could be another. You know, providing secure trash bins, clear instructions on how and when to dispose of garbage. And these items are also in my welcome book. Local business partnerships, I think is a strong point. Hosts can encourage guests to patronize local businesses by providing guides or discount vouchers, thereby benefiting the local Neigantik and East Line community. Safety measures, installation of security cameras and proper lighting around the property can offer added safety for both guests and neighbors, and obviously you don't want those, you know, floodlights blasting into your neighbors' yards and homes. Occupancy limits, you know, set a reasonable limit, I think something that makes sense. And regular communication, maybe create a neighborhood forum or, or something, or a newsletter where hosts and neighbors can communicate openly about upcoming rentals, special events, or other related news. Host certification, maybe consider a simple local good host certification that covers basic safety and community guidelines, could give potential renters confidence and ensure that hosts are also held accountable. And certainly property upkeep, aesthetics, you know, will help our overall maintain a neighborhood sort of a standard of upkeep. And, and finally, I just want to say that, you know, I have a son and I have a family, and, you know, it's like the, we're sort of, we don't want, I, I feel like we don't want to kill the entrepreneurial spirit and the creative minds in, in some of us. Because I think for some, maybe it's, you know, helping put their kids through college. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Isabel Georgian, twenty-seven Baby Road. I think a lot of what you've heard tonight is personal stories of mom and pops, of, of families trying to hold on to a family home, or just, you know, being able to make a little extra money on the side in the town that we live in. It is not corporations that are coming in, these are not giant condos or apartment complexes that are going into town, it's people that are taking, that are, that have a house that they're using as a vacation house, using it to rent to other people to help make ends meet. I live next one, and I also own one. And I can tell you that the short-term people are much better to live next than long-term people. And I also know that if it's a bad one, occasionally you do get a bad one, they leave after a weekend. I don't have to live next to them all year. I also think it's important to look at the data. What is the data that supports that we need to have all these regulations put in? How many incidents are happening at Airbnbs versus a regular rental house? What are the, and, and our town in general, our town population? So I think you need to have data to support making changes to things that maybe don't need to be changed.
Thank you. Thanks, okay. We'll end delegations again, September twenty-fifth, Monday, seven PM is the public hearing proposed. We have to vote on that this evening, but most likely that will happen, but stay tuned for that. I encourage you to remain for the remainder of the meeting because we will be having reports by town officials, and I think the, this information would be helpful for you to, to share or to, to listen to. Part of the reason why the public hearing is put off a bit was just for this purpose of having information given to other board members and to the public ahead of that public hearing, for us to be better educated. And to the last speaker's point, absolutely, this is the whole reason for being of this, of this board is to, is to investigate and to find out what's happening and where it's happening and fashion a solution if need be. So we are definitely data-driven, and if you stay long enough, you will see our, our reading, our reading pile for the next few weeks, so. Okay, moving on, approval of minutes of the regular meeting of August fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Oh, and before, let me just take one minute, I, there was a gentleman from, let me back up for a moment, James Weaver, president of the Oak Grove Beach Community Association, sent, could not be here apparently, so has a brief statement, and it's very brief, so I will read it into the record, and I'll include this. My name is Jim Weaver, I'm the current president of the Oak Grove Beach Community Association, and I'm representing the Board of Directors for that association. Short-term rentals should not be permitted in our district for at least three reasons. We are zoned as an R-12 residential district. Our zone allows single and two-family dwellings. Commercial establishments for the sole purpose of profit are not listed and therefore should not be permitted. If meals were being served out of a house for payment, health inspectors would shut that down immediately. Running a hotel should warrant the same treatment. Two, there is no town licensing or permitting currently in place. No inspections are being done. Landlords can advertise any number of beds without oversight. This is potentially, potentially a health and safety hazard. Three, even with today's technology, absentee landlords cannot restrict unlawful or non-permitted activity quickly enough to prevent noise, illegal parking, and overcrowding from spiraling out of control. I hope the police report later this evening will verify that. In conclusion, the key word in our association name is community. With every daily rental, we risk losing that sense of community that the current population has worked long and hard to foster. On behalf of all of them, please pass a town ordinance which will eliminate illegal, dangerous, and chaotic short-term rentals. Thank you, signed Jim C. Weaver, president of the Oak Grove Beach Community Association. So we'll get that in with all the other documents. Okay, moving on to approval of minutes of our first meeting of August fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Do I have a motion to approve? Seconded, okay. Any comments, corrections to those minutes? Okay, all right, I will take a vote, all those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of August fourteenth, say. Any opposed? Any extensions? None, okay. All right, so we're moving on to item four on the agenda, a report by town officials. And we can start with Mr. Maholland, our zoning official. Thanks, Bill.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Bill Maholland, zoning official, I've essentially prepared a memo, Madam Chair, so I want to pass that out and add to your reading pile.
Okay.
I have not taken a position but in just reporting some of the facts and gathered some materials, and you'll certainly be asking for additional materials as you progress through this process, so I'd like to pass these out.
Thanks. He has a statement at the beginning. You could read that, or he gets some of it. So Bill, yeah, I see that you've written a memo. I think you could read it or summarize it yourself, yeah, you could just, yes. Yeah. So I can talk less.
There you go. So I've essentially written a memo to, to cover some of the issues that have come up in some of the basic zoning that's currently in place in our zoning code. And then I've gathered some additional material such as a, an ordinance from Simsbury who recently passed it, some materials from New York City who are wrestling with this issue of some NOINC information, you know I staffed NOINC, and we did some, we over at NOINC limited them to thirty days, but they did write an ordinance that they never enacted, but I've provided some of that material because there was a lot of research material by some, some very bright people who took a couple of years to look into it. So you've, it's sort of weighted on both sides of the question. So let me briefly read my memo, and you can look at the materials at your convenience, and as a staff resource, let me know what you need from my position. So from, to the, excuse me, says East Line Zoning Commission, excuse me, should have been to the committee, a little typo, from William Maholland, zoning official, reasons short-term rentals. The committee chair has requested that I provide a brief overview of the existing zoning perspective on short-term rentals, STRs. As we know, STRs have become a push-button topic of conversation in many communities with varying passion views on both sides of the debate. Presently in our community, our zoning regulations should do not specifically permit STRs as a use. The zoning regulations have historically been interpreted as being written in a permissive manner. For example, if a use is not a listed permitted use, it is not an allowed use. A re, a review of the zoning regulations finds that short-term rentals, STRs, are not a listed permitted use in any zone, nor is that term defined in the code. However, the term motel is defined in Section one-five-dash-one, one-five-zero-dash-one and states in full, a building or portion thereof kept, used, maintained, advertised, or held out to the public containing thirteen or more units used for sleeping accommodations for guests and providing lodging with or without meals and other incidental services in which there are certain public rooms and service for the use of transient guests. The phrase transient guests, while not defined in our regulations, implies a short-term rental stay. Black's Lord Dictionary defines the word transient as one who, as one who, comma, or may which, is temporary, synonymous with transitory, fugitive, fleeting, momentary. A hotel is also defined in Section one-point-three-three of the zoning regulations and states, a building or portion thereof kept, used, maintained, advertised, or held out to the public containing thirteen or more units used for sleeping accommodations for guests, providing lodging with or without meals, and other incidental services for the use of transient guests only. Access by a majority of the guests shall be by way of a central point slash lobby. Some entities would argue that an STR is essentially one and the same as a transient hotel or motel. Others might argue that an STR activity is simply a continuation of residential use. While the zoning regulations presently do not permit STRs, the regulations have in the past been amended to reflect uses in a changing society. Some can, some Connecticut communities have chosen to regulate STRs with the zoning authority, and others have chosen to regulate them via a community ordinance. NOINC, for example, regulates them through their zoning code. They allow STRs for thirty days or more defining the use by using the state tax definition. In addition, NOINC zoning authorities spent considerable time reviewing the issue and developed a set of zoning regs to permit the use. I have included in my handouts a copy of their work. Ultimately, the community chose to limit such activities to a minimum of thirty days. I'm also providing the following handouts, they reflect numerous viewpoints and opinions on both sides of the discussion. They are, item one, STR overview by COG, the Southeastern Connecticut Regional Council of Governments, dated September twenty-nineteen. Item two, Legislative Research Report Regulating Airbnb Rentals Through Zoning in Connecticut, dated September twenty-eighth, twenty-eighteen. Item three, State of Connecticut Department of Revenue Services Room Occupancy Tax, dated twenty-nineteen. Item four, NOINC Fire District Proposed Zoning Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance to Allow Short-Term Rentals, dated April twenty, twenty-one. Item five, Commentary by Airbix, an STR rental company, on New York City Proposed STR Regulations, dated twenty-twenty-two. Item six, A Copy of the Town of Simsbury Short-Term Rental Ordinance, adopted November eighth, twenty-twenty-one. Further, if the community choose, chose to regulate STRs through zoning, a number of changes would have to be vetted. First and foremost is whether the rental properties are tracked via a permit and how activity is monitored for compliance with any regulations. The issue of parking, occupancy load, refuse, noise would need to be addressed as well as inspections. If an ordinance was, was the regulatory vehicle of choice, similar issues would need to be addressed. In conclusion, the community, in my view, has three choices. It can regulate the use by town ordinance or its zoning regulations, or it can prohibit them. Given the many strong opinions on the subject, the committee will have to carefully evaluate the pros and cons of regulating or prohibiting the use. And in addition, you have all the handouts in your, in your packet. As a resource, you need something from my office, my department, let me know, I'm happy to do some research and poke around and see what we can come up with. I'm aware of town attorneys here, if you choose to go to an ordinance or even our zoning regulations, I think certainly we'd want that input as well on the specifics of any regulation you may choose to use. So questions or?
Any questions?
Next time around.
Well, thanks, Bill.
You're welcome.
And I'm sure we're going to have more questions as we dive into that reading material.
You know, just, just follow up, I, I've been doing NOINC zoning for, for many, many, many years, and they wrestled with it for three or four years. They ultimately chose to allow it for thirty days. They monitor the websites twice a week, they have a hundred percent compliance. They too ran into the same issue of the community being essentially gutted and becoming more commercialized, and it became a local issue. They also looked at the ordinance over there, everything is, is not even part-time, I mean, it's a couple hours a week, so they don't have real staff, so they chose to go down that path. Simsbury, on the other hand, adopted an ordinance. I think it's a community choice, not necessarily a right or wrong on whatever side of the debate you're on, and so you have a tough task ahead of you, and let me know what you need from my office.
Great. So much, okay. With that, Dave Garside, our building official, will present next. Thank you, Dave.
Good evening, everybody. Dave Garside, building official. As you know, my job is to administer and
That's not.
make sure that the building code is being applied properly. In the building code, we do define transient in nature, thirty days or less, but that occupancy is in the IBC, International Building Code, which is an R-one use group. And then residential use group is for a single-family, usually designed for a single-family to occupy the structure at all times. So the code is kind of ambiguous, because as you go through the IBC, it refers you to the IRC and for a single-family resident, but how you use a building is important. You could have a building that you use for a business selling antiques, and then one day you decide to have an auction, well, that's a change of use, change of occupancy, because now you're bringing in a group of people over fifty, so now you're changing the use of the building. So I had to formally reach out to both the State Building Inspector's Office and to ICC, who is the International Code Council. I've asked them a pretty simple question. We have companies coming in, purchasing buildings for the sole purpose of renting them out. They're not looking to occupy them as a single-family dwelling unit, they're renting them out constantly under a short term. So I've asked the ICC this, a limited liability corporation purchases a single-family dwelling unit constructed or occupied under the international code, yeah, international residential code, with the sole purpose of renting it for thirty days or less, transient nature, does this require a change of use, change of occupancy? The code addresses that. Whenever you use a structure for other than what it was designed, it may be a change of use, a change of occupancy required. My next question to them is a homeowner rents a secondary single-family house, single-family dwelling unit, and occasionally rents to tenants for less than thirty days, does this require a change of use, a change of occupancy? My goal is to make sure whatever's being done here is being done lawfully under the building code. That's my charge. So I've reached out to both the State Building Officials' Office and to ICC to get their formal interpretations on this. So with that, you know, once I get the answer from them, we should have a better understanding which path we should take.
Yeah, that's, that's great, thanks, Dave.
Okay.
Any questions, Mr. Garside?
All set.
Well, thanks so much. All right. Mr. Bundy, next, our Fire Marshal.
Good evening, I'm Bill Bundy, I'm the Town of East Line Fire Marshal. First, I just want to address a couple of the things that were, I was tasked to research for you folks at our last meeting. What I did is I pretty much conducted a straw poll of some of our neighboring towns, and this is exclusively relating to the office of the Fire Marshal of the local municipalities, as it pertains to their involvement with short-term rentals and, and or code enforcement or inspections or anything of the like. I checked with the Town of New London, they do not have a town ordinance. Anything relating to the local Fire Marshal is related to a single-family residence, which means they have no authority. Town of Norwich has no town ordinance, they also have, they treat it as a single-family residence, they have no authority. Old Saybrook, Monfo, Old Line, and Waterford, all treated as a single-family residence with no town ordinance. That's not to say that they don't share the commonalities of all the, all the points that have been brought up on both sides of the, the debate, but currently, as it relates to the Fire Marshal's office, they treat them as single-family residents. One of the things that I also looked at was, how are these properties impacting services out of my office? And this will maybe tie into one of the questions regarding data. In two thousand twenty-two, I researched, the Town of East Line responded to over- In 2022, I researched, the Town of Eastline responded to over 3,000 fire and EMS calls throughout the town, of which there were about 2,400 of those were EMS. There's no way to differentiate if 123 Main Street had an EMS call and 124 Main Street had a, which one's an Airbnb and which one is not. So, there's no way currently, because they're not registered, they're not tracked, there's no way to track that kind of data to show if we're sending people out for the assault victim who, at this unruly party at one of these out-of-control events, is at an Airbnb or just a private residence. So, there's no way to track that data. In the last year since I've been here, I've had contact with several of the beach associations because there's always seems during the summertime, and I'll call the season Memorial Day to Labor Day, recreational fires. I figure what could be another lane that may tax a service? My predecessors always required a permit be issued for a beach fire, a little bonfire or campfire. It's not required by statute, but there's a process to follow. When I took over, I did away with the permit process. I had conversations with several members of the associations. So, in order to have a fire on one of the beaches, provided that the beach association's regulations were followed, they needed to contact my office, contact dispatch, and we make sure that they're not violating any air quality index. We check the air quality index and the fire danger, and if such, I can give verbal authority over the phone to have the fire, as the authority having jurisdiction. During this season, from, again, Memorial Day to Labor Day, I've probably done that a handful of times, maybe a half a dozen times. So, to say that we're having, you know, crazy parties with bonfires on the beach, I have no data to support that. Couple of the things that were brought up regarding inspections, life safety codes, well, it all falls back to what my authority is, and as I mentioned, my colleagues in other towns, they say they have no authority, so I want to explain to you where my authority comes from. My authority as a local fire marshal comes from state statute, Chapter 541. One of the statutes is 2148, which is, it addresses lodging houses. Now, that was something that was brought up, with the lodging houses. Those are, they're licensed by the town. Our town ordinance is pretty much mirrors the state statute. It spells it out, and they get inspected annually for things such as working fire extinguishers, working smoke detectors, make sure their means of egresses are following, that there's no life safety or fire code violations. The definition of a lodging house by state statute is, "Such houses are patronized by roving or transient persons to whom beds or rooms are furnished and as contained accommodations for not fewer than five people, tourist camps, cottages that are rented by the day." So, we have a handful of them. I think there's about a dozen of them throughout the town. They register annually with the town. They pay their permit fee, and we go out and inspect them. Aside from that, we don't know, we don't know what's operating as a lodging house if they're not registered. 29305 gives me the authority to go in and do inspection for these life safety codes, and it's going to address all the things that are brought up here in terms of, in some cases, occupancy and egress and whatnot. It gives me the authority to inspect at least once a year, calendar year, or as prescribed by the state fire marshal pursuant to this section, all buildings and facilities of public service and occupancies regulated by the Fire Safety Code or Fire Prevention Code within my jurisdiction, except residential buildings as designed to be occupied by one or two family. So unless there's a change in the occupancy of these, I have no authority to go in and do these life safety checks. The next one would be what we call Directive 10, which follows 29306, which is the abatement of fire hazards. And again, this gives me the authority to go in and ascertain if there's any, and we call them the five deadly sins. Blocked egress, blocked or insufficient, impeded egresses, the maintaining or shutting off of any fire protection warning system required by the codes, the storage of flammable materials or explosive materials without permits, the use of fireworks or pyrotechnics without permits, and the exceeding an occupancy limit set by the state or local fire marshal. But I'll bring you back to what was before. In a single-family residence, I don't have the authority to set occupancy, so this wouldn't apply. This part of the statute, pretty much, the only time it would be applied historically to a single-family residence, we use it in hoarding cases, when there's somebody who's living and their home is in such a condition that they can't, it's created such a fire hazard or a life safety issue to themselves, then we have the ability to go in, we give them four hours by statute to remedy any of these problems, and if they can't do so, then we have the ability to remove them from their homes, and it becomes a liability of the town. Other than that, this is pretty much designed for commercial properties with fire alarms, occupancies and such. I did make a couple of notes relative to some of the information that was, or some of the questions that were brought up. Parking issues. The only issues that would relate outside of a single-family on-street parking is when it becomes an impedance to fire apparatus. So, when you get into some of the beach communities, if they're going to bottleneck the lanes and you have the ability for a fire apparatus to get down there, then that would become problematic. I don't have any data to say over the course of the last year since I've been here that we've had to go out and have cars towed, but that would be of a concern. Occupancy, I addressed. All these other issues, the fire, smoke extinguishers and whatnot, those would be things that had the town, or if the town chooses to change occupancies or to make some sort of change in its current status, our office would, based on the recommendation of the town, would have the ability to go in and do that. That would also, and one of them was mentioned, creating a list or contact list of owners, which may become beneficial in the event that when you have absentee owners or people who are utilizing these, and they're coming in, in the event that there is an issue, we know who's on file, that we have the ability to contact. And other than that, that's pretty much, that's pretty much it, so.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions?
What kind of staff do you have to conduct these fire inspections?
Currently, there's myself. I have a full-time deputy, and then I have two other part-time deputies.
And how long does it take to do a single inspection of?
Of a single-family residence such as this, or something comparable?
Right.
Probably an hour, less than, less than an hour. I mean, because again, we're, these properties would have been seen at the initial inspection by the building department, so a lot of these things I've already addressed, but it's going to get, you're getting into when you're requiring, through Mr. Garside's office, a single-family residence to have smoke detectors operating, nobody follows up on that after the CO's issue. So, we go in, we check that, we check the fire extinguishers. It's pretty much a cursory walkthrough, unless something jumps out and that's going to require something a little bit more extensive to look at, but I think ideally, we're probably looking at less than an hour to go in and look at these.
Do you think it would be a good idea or a bad idea to do fire inspections on short-term rentals?
Personally, I think it's a good idea to do these because you're dealing with, you're dealing with people's lives, you're dealing with souls, and anytime you're, there's always a rollover of going in. I mean, if people are coming into, and coming into a property, and they're staying there and they're laying down, there should be some sort of accountability that if there's an emergency event in the middle of the night, they should be notified to get out. Any other questions?
Anyone else? Any questions?
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks. Tonight, we will not hear from Chief Mike from our police department, but I'm working with him to have a presentation at some point in the near future. I've contacted him. Okay, so with that, I think we certainly have some good starting information, and we can, you know, if there's clarity needed, we can also, you know, email our officials to provide any other information. The next item on our agenda is Item 5, which is the distribution of reading materials. And I'll turn the meeting over at this point to Gary, my co-chair, who was very kind to get, or maybe not so, to establish a reading list and some materials, and he'll go over that, and we'll distribute that pile to you shortly. But Gary, what was your thinking with some of these items that you put together?
Sure.
And be sure your mic is close to you.
So, I'm neither an owner of beach property, so I don't rent property out to tenants on short-term rental. However, I've used them, I enjoy them, like many people. So, I was interested in the topic, and that's why I'm here, trying to figure out what needs to be done, if anything needs to be done in Eastline. So, in researching the issues, there's a lot of information online. I'm an attorney, so I was heavy on legal stuff. I understand legal stuff. There's a couple lawyers here. So, what I did start with was ordinances of some of the beach communities, just so we have an idea of what the beach, local beach communities do. I did put some definitions from the state statutes regarding, for example, lodging houses and hotels and motels, just so that we have an idea whether a short-term rental fits in these definitions or not. I did include some legislative action. And I'm thinking, well, why doesn't our state legislature do something about this instead of doing nothing? Well, apparently, they've done a lot, and the research that I've looked at, I have access to legal research, shows that they're constantly trying to do something, but it just, nothing, there was never any consensus to pass anything substantive. So, the state legislature has been doing, trying to take action for a number of years, just no consensus, as is the same in our state. I also did include some information on a case. It's, the name of the case is Whitty versus Board of Appeals. This is a current lawsuit that occurred in the state of Connecticut, and really, it's the only case law that is relevant to this particular issue. This case was recently decided by the appellate court, however, it is on appeal to the State Supreme Court. The defendant, the Pine Orchard, the Beach Association, has filed their briefs. I did include a copy of the brief. I included a copy of the appellate decision, of the lower court decision, so that members can take a look and see the thought process and the analysis taken by the different courts. So, the Supreme Court may take oral argument on this case, maybe in December, January, February, and, you know, then they have several months to make an appeal, to make a decision. So, we may not have a decision on that until spring, April, May, June. So, at least we're being proactive here, but that particular decision is going to be important for us. I also did include examples of other towns, what they've done with respect to short-term rentals, Lime, Simsbury, Greenwich, Groton, and Ledgerd. So, there are some basic articles there, and I also included some general articles. Pros and cons, I don't have an agenda, so as an attorney, I'm trying to present both sides for the members to be able to read, both the pros and the cons, the things that hurt the neighborhood, maybe short-term rentals hurt the complexion of the neighborhood, maybe they take away affordable housing, however, maybe they benefit the economy. So, there's going to be a balance when we have to decide this issue. So, I included articles about that. I also included a Massachusetts state court decision prohibiting short-term rentals, and a settlement in some lawsuits involving Airbnb. So, these are the types of documents that I thought were important. I don't have a monopoly on what's relevant, what's important, so if any of the other members have other ideas and documents, they'll feel free to print them and distribute them. This was my first try.
That's great. Thanks so much for digging already pretty deep and providing the, you know, some necessary information. And then, you know, today, from our officials, we heard things, you know, references to statutes we need to take a look at, references to ordinances such as our noise ordinance that we can take a look at. So, we're off to the races here. So, we'll just, you know, we'll send these down this way. Any questions for Gary, or any comments, thoughts?
Will there be a test?
We haven't known.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you. Yeah. Here's what it looks like. Plus, we have Mr. Mahollan, too. That's great. But seriously, I think it's just really important that we, you know, gather as much data as possible, what's happening in town, what's happening elsewhere for models, because we need to look for models and see how applicable they are or not, and in the end, that looking outward also helps us save time, too, in the long run, all assuming that, you know, there is something to be done. We haven't even come to that conclusion yet, so, as I said earlier. Okay, so, well, thanks for that, Gary. And then, while you're still speaking, any other report, because I'll move on to number six on the agenda, report by co-chairs. Any other thoughts you have at this time, besides the materials?
No, I don't have anything else to report.
Okay.
It was good to have everyone's comments, and hopefully, people can come to the next meeting. We'll have more time to talk. Invite people. We'll be here all night to listen to and get an idea if there's a problem. Really, that's what we need to see, is, is there a problem? Does it need to be addressed? But we also need to be proactive. So, we don't have an agenda.
That's correct. Absolutely, yeah, absolutely not. For myself, as the other co-chair, I just wanted to point out that I think we need to do something. I'll probably end up doing it, because I've done this kind of thing before, with the town website, when you want to look up what's happening with this group, it's a little circuitous, to say the least. You have to go to Board of Selectmen as your choice under government, then you have to find a subcommittee. So, I think we can highlight ourselves, as did the Charter Revision Committee, and they had their own, they had their own billing, if you will, where you could just click that on and go directly to the agendas, the minutes. You could also just get some basic information. So, for example, we would post our charge from the Board of Selectmen there. We would list the members, and then Gary and I will be the recipients of any emails, or we will post our email addresses, so that we can take those as well as public comment, because not everyone will necessarily, you know, come in person to the meeting here, but we want to be able to gather that information. So, look for that in the coming weeks. That's got to get, you know, through our website, just got to get that a little bit better organized and a little more visible. And if committee members have any thoughts on that and would you like included in that, we'll keep it brief, but just give a shout, you know, and we'll get that accomplished. But that's all I have for this evening. So, we're on to Item 7, which is scheduling our future meetings, and obviously, the, let's see where I am here. Yes, so, the first item is 7A, which is scheduling a public hearing, and the suggested date was Monday, September 25th at 7:00 PM. So, what I'd like is someone could read this into the record, and then, you know, second, and then have discussion, if necessary.
Town of Eastline Short-Term Rental Committee, notice of public hearing, read possible short-term rental regulations in the Town of Eastline. Notice is hereby given that the Eastline Short-Term Rental Committee will hold a Notice is hereby given that the East Lime Short-Term Rental Committee will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, September 25th, 2023, at the East Lime Town Hall, Upper Meeting Room, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut, to receive comments concerning the Town of East Lime's possible regulation of short-term rentals. Interested persons are invited to attend and be heard. Dated at East Lime, Connecticut, on this 12th day of September, 2023, Town of East Lime Short-Term Rental Committee, by Ann Santoro, its co-chairperson.
Okay, thank you for that. Do I have a second for that? Second, sorry. Okay, second. And any discussion?
I just have a question, if you think this room is large enough.
Yeah, so for the, when we decided on a, you know, kind of thinking about a date, we had to book something, so we booked here. Yes, we can look elsewhere, so that may change, and we have time in the next few days to figure that out in terms of, this has to be posted, newspaper, et cetera, there's a certain time. But we have enough days, because it's the 11th and this is the 25th. So, but we could think about another location. Many times, we think about the middle school, if it's open, because there's just more chairs and more space there. Anyone else have a phone? All, thanks.
Clearly, we have interest in the community. We're about full. And when you offer a public hearing, we're probably going to have an opportunity to generate more activity, so a larger venue may make some sense. I know Attorney Zamarca is here. We can still have time, once we've read this posted notice tonight, we can still have time to...
That's correct. It's not technically a fact until it's posted and published in the newspaper, so I would just suggest that there is going to be a different venue, try to decide on it as quickly as possible.
Okay. But we can move through with this, this notice this evening, wrote on this, this evening? Is that what you...
So for the record...
Subject to the possibility of changing of location.
Okay, so let's do that. Right.
So for the record, because you're not on the microphone, and I know people can hear, you said that we have time to deal with this, and we should look for another opportunity for a venue as soon as we could, and the motion will reflect that we're going to be doing that.
Correct. So long as the notice is posted seven days prior to the hearing, we'll be fine.
So as long as the notice is posted seven days.
Okay, okay.
And Brooke is terrific at that.
All right. So basically, notice with the amended language that we will likely to change location ahead of posting. Okay. All right, so that's it for comments.
Sounds good.
So we'll take a vote, all those in favor of the amended notice.
Aye.
Aye? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So we're good to go there. Okay. And then scheduling other meetings, it's possible that we have a short meeting following the public hearing, which might make some sense. Just to begin some dialogue and conversation, let's say you've digested about half of your materials, plus the public input that we've had from tonight, plus what you hear then. I think I would, you know, we can, I can come up with something for agenda items, but I think it might be good to just begin some conversation. Does that make sense?
Sounds good.
Okay. So we'll do that with a, you know, a regular meeting to follow that public hearing. Okay, wherever that's, and it wouldn't be here, it would be in that other location, presumably. Okay. Item, so that will be on the 25th. And future, other future meetings, I think we'll hold off on that until the 25th and figure out what we need down the road. Is that okay with the consensus on that one? So we're not, you know, booking our calendars out there. Okay. Well, that being said, we'll move on to item eight, which is public comment. This public comment is actually just on there, because typically, we have comment on items not on the agenda, so, but, you know, it's just a formality we usually follow. The delegations are directed to the items that were on the agenda, so I think we're okay there. So I'll just start down the line. Any committee member comments this evening? We can start to my left here, with Greg.
Greg McIntyre, I think, I think what we heard was pretty much what we expected to hear, that there are what I perceive to be traditional short-term rentals, and there are a new variety of short-term rentals. And the new variety is the ones that are concerning people. Those are the ones that are on Airbnb and are renting every night and have, there's more 14 cars, I think, it was cited over there, not unusual at all. I myself have been a short-term renter in the past in our neighborhood. So I see the value for, the value against, and it's a complex issue. But I think everybody will agree, there are times where the parking, the safety, the noise, the other things become an issue, and it's good to have an ordinance or zoning that we can look to for guidance.
Down the line there, yeah. And introduce yourself to the, we don't have nameplates yet. That's coming.
John Salino, 60 East Shore Drive, Blackpoint. I'd just like to thank everybody. Your comments were excellent, gave us a lot to think about. They're both well-thought-out, and the three professional staffs are excellent reports. Thank you. We'll look forward to addressing this again on the public hearing date. Thank you.
I'm Gary Faruja. I live in the Saunders Point area, and I'm a member of the Oswegachi Hills Club, which is a social group. And we've been looking at this issue for about a year, but only in as much as using the facilities of Oswegachi Hills. We have a tennis court, a beach, a little golf course, a few parks. And so we've been looking how we can adjust to this with short-term renters. But I must say, in the year that we've been looking at this, I've heard all of the comments multiple times from everybody in my neighborhood. And it is certainly a subject that's got people's attention, and there's some people who are very concerned about it. But it's also a neighborhood, like many of the other beach communities here, where there's a long history of renters. In fact, the neighborhood was started with cottages, for the most part. So there's a long history of that. So trying to come up with a good balance here is going to be the work of this committee, and I'm proud to be a part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Paul Formica. I've been in the political world for a long time, serving here as First Selectman for eight years, and in the state senate for eight years. I'm now the current president of the Giant's Neck Beach Association, which brings me the interest here, and I'm an owner of a short-term rental that I, that I've had for about a year and a half with a partner. I've been in government a long time, and one thing I've learned in government is the less government you have, the better off most people are. I think, I think we have to be mindful of that as we work to fashion a solution. Now, there are some situations that require an outline and a guidance for which we have to do, and as always, we have to consider public safety number one. We have a great team of professionals, as you heard this evening, that are here to guide us, and I think that will, that will help us as we move through. I believe Attorney Zamarca gave us a charge last week from the Board of Selectmen, and we are not a committee that's going to make a decision, as far as I know, on this issue. We are going to report our ideas and hand it to the Board of Selectmen, where they will fashion any new regulations or any move to the zoning issue. So we are basically a recommended body here. And I, too, have been looking at this issue over the last year, and I can tell you, we've probably had more problems dealing with pickleball than we did with short-term rentals. So, you know, this is something we need to look at, but again, I think we should proceed with caution as to how we do this. And just for the record, this community, I believe, has nine beach associations, I think, believe seven of which are quasi-municipalities who have their own zoning regulations and govern themselves. And there are ways, I think, that we can utilize the cooperation with the Council of Beaches to try to come with a final solution on this. I've been in touch with the Giant's Neck Beach, Heights Association President, so we're trying to work together there. But I'm grateful to have the opportunity to be on here, and I thank you all for your commitment to come and state your views tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you. Well, Ann, and I'll say, Ann is currently chair of our zoning commission in town, so go ahead, Ann Thurlow.
Ann Thurlow. I live in Niantic. I do not own any short-term rentals. There are a couple in my neighborhood. I don't have a real opinion one way or another. I just look forward to the hearing that we're going to have and to read all the materials. The one thing that did kind of interest me, I thought this was kind of just a problem in, along the shoreline and maybe just in the United States, but I just read an article where town villages in Italy are having the same discussions as we are. So that was pretty interesting. But I look forward to hearing more people comment in the hearing on the 25th.
I, Gary Chikello, co-chair. So I've been in East Lime for about 20 years, and all I hear about East Lime is how charming it is, how much residents love it, how much people like to come visit East Lime, and it's really true. So you folks need to help us understand what's going on. And what I am interested in hearing is, tonight I heard some people who own short-term rentals tell us how they can manage these things in a, in a, in a good way. That's, that's good. We want to hear more of that. But we also, I'm interested in hearing how we can coexist with short-term rentals and maintain the character of East Lime. How, for example, I think one of our officials indicated that a community in Noank was gutted because of the existence of short-term rentals. So I would like you folks to not only tell me your anecdotal issues of how you run your short-term rentals, but how, the way you operate them helps East Lime's character. So big picture, that's what I'm interested in. I understand folks may be making money so they can afford the tax, the high taxes in town, and the insurance rates, but how can we maintain the character of East Lime? That's what I'm interested in. So when you make comments at the next hearing, please address, try to address that issue also. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Thanks, everyone, for coming and speaking, and, you know, look forward to your comments and other comments on the 25th. I think it's a really vital part of our work. And as Mr. Formica stated, we are definitely an advisory group, but the hard, I'll say this, because I've been on enough of these subcommittees, the hard work is done here. We will research, we will discuss, get the public's input, and make a good recommendation. And our recommendation date at this point is not till mid-January, or I think it's January 17th of 2024. And that could even be extended if we find we need more time and more analysis. So, so I think, you know, to find out what issues do exist, if they exist, to what extent, and how best to resolve them. And I think it's a two-pronged process. It's information gathering and it's creative intelligence solutions. And we have some good examples from other towns, but every, remember this, every town and every situation is so unique. There's a sort of, you know, thing that binds all of these communities with, you know, companies coming in, buying property, you know, not having enough parking, all of these issues sort of, you know, all of these issues amongst various towns and cities overlap. But in the end, you have to look at the unique character, and I think Gary, you know, mentioned that, unique character of the town. So I look forward to that. Okay, all right. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move, Madam Chair.
Okay, in a second. Sorry, Greg. Okay, thanks. And we are adjourned. Thanks. I'm going to adjourn.